Good evening. Welcome. My name is Debbie Howard. I'm with the League of Women Voters and I want to welcome all of you to this candidates' forum for the Rockwood, our six school district candidates. And a big thank you to Rockwood for holding this forum. The candidates participating in tonight's forum are running for an unexpired one-year term. One of them, you can only vote for one of these two fine gentlemen, will be elected. The candidates are, in the order they appear on the ballot, Herman L. Kriegshouser and Lawrence Allen Lazar. Okay. I am a volunteer with the League of Women Voters and I have several other volunteers who are from the League that will be helping with the forum. Our timer will be Kay Wenzine. And our people who will be passing out and collecting the cards on which you can ask your questions will be Evelyn Beretta, Catherine Stenger, Jane Nettishime, and Mary Brown. I will now read the rules that have been sent out to the candidates and by which the forum will be governed. The League of Women Voters of St. Louis believes that one of the best ways for voters to learn about people seeking election is to hear candidates speak and answer questions in a public forum. The candidates will have two minutes each for an opening statement, have one minute to answer each question, have the right to speak to all questions, including those posed specifically to another candidate, have two minutes for a closing statement. The audience will write questions directed to one candidate or to both candidates on the cards which are available from the card people that I just mentioned. Write questions which are of general interest and not about personal matters. The League of Women Voters believes that forums should cover issues, not personalities. The timekeeper will time all opening and closing statements, time candidate answers to questions allowing one minute per response, indicate 30 seconds time remaining with a yellow card, indicate time expired with a red card. The moderator will explain the procedure, introduce the candidates, read to the candidates the questions submitted by the members of the audience, retain the option to combine questions which are similar or address the same topic, ensure that each candidate has an equal opportunity to answer questions, enforce the ground rules. Audio and videotape recordings may be made of this meeting. Applause, demonstrations take time and will not be allowed. The sponsor and moderator reserve the right to ask seriously disruptive audience members and/or candidates to leave. The League of Women Voters of St. Louis determines which questions will be asked and attempts in good faith to cover areas of interest expressed by the audience. We provide this service as our mission to encourage citizen participation in government. All candidates certified to appear on the ballot for a particular office have been invited to the forum. Because we do not support or oppose candidates, campaign materials may not be passed out during the meeting. We request that campaign clothing and/or buttons not be worn. A table for brochures and handouts will be provided outside the meeting room. Okay. Please turn off all cell phones. The opening statements will be given in ballot order, so let us start with Mr. Kriegshouser, please.
Thank you. Thank you for coming to see me. I appreciate that.
You have your microphone right there.
Can you hear me all right?
Okay.
I am a candidate for the one-year term. I have served on Rockwood Budget and Finance Committees going back to 2007 with Dr. Craig Larson and David Glazer, the CFO, and with, continuing with the next two superintendents, and now with Dr. Knopf. And I have served on the bond committees and support this new bond issue we have of 68.95 million. And I want to see us keep our schools AAA rated. I put this, this is on the Rockwood School Board webpage and states my background. I have a degree in accounting. I was an auditor in the U.S. Air Force for a few years, auditor general. We had our own business. I was Executive Vice President of it. I served on the old Central Bank of Clayton, which was part of the Bank of St. Louis Board back in years ago, and in Carnet Word Hospital when they built the new addition on Lafayette and Grand. I served on the Better Business Bureau. I still serve on the Salvation Army Midland Division. And I was involved with the high school hockey. Did you get the program, Eric? I gave a program to Dan yesterday to give you.
I did.
Yeah, okay. From the tournament we had. And I'll just briefly read what I have on the webpage since, well, we are an excellent AAA-rated district, high student performance, major problem is providing funding. The two-thirds of our funding comes from local property taxes, but as explained in the budget, the 228-page annual report of Rockwood School District, our income from property taxes has been going down. I got 30 seconds. So we need to think hard how we're going to get additional money because the state's told us they're going to provide less money. And we have to have good money in order to keep our programs going, stay AAA-rated. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lazar.
Hi, everyone, and thank you all very much again for coming. It's great to see parents and citizens are interested in our school, as I am. And the reason, let me tell you a little bit about myself and I'll tell you a little bit about why I'm here. My wife and I moved here, wife and I and two kids moved here 17 years ago from Kansas City. Reason we moved here is because of Rockwood. That's why we're not in Parkway or not in Melville or not someplace else. It was the very first thing that we looked at for where to live was how good the schools were. And we saw Rockwood was on top of the list. We talked to a lot of people and they all spoke praises about Rockwood. Now that my kids are in college, they graduated in 2000, Morgan graduated, Jeff graduated in 2013, Morgan graduated in 2014, 13 and 14. They're both off to college and doing great, and I attribute a lot of their success in college to, you know, the education of Rockwood. Not just their education of their math and their reading and all that, but also the values that they gained here, the ethics, working with others and respect and perseverance and all those things that we don't, can't measure and attest that are so important to us throughout life. I think a lot of that that they gained here through Rockwood. There's a quick story about my daughter, Morgan. She was recently, oh, she's in a marching band at Missouche, she's a marching tiger. So hats off to John Arata at Eureka High for preparing her for that. But she went, she was invited to a honors fraternity social event at Missouri. And she goes to the social event, accepted the invitation, goes, and she's surrounded by Rockwood kids, right? It's Lafayette kids and Marquette kids and Eureka kids and Summit kids. It was like dominated, the whole, the whole social event was with the Rockwood kids. And that just shows you the value and how good, you know, we're trying, Rockwood I think provides a great service at a great value. We do this at a really low cost and I think what I can bring is my, I work for Energizer. My business is in return on investment analysis and planning and things like that, and I have to stop, so I think I can apply that to here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Humans goes fast.
Our first question will go with kind of a general one. What do you see as the biggest challenge for the district and what is your solution?
What was that mean to you?
Oh, I'll start with Mr. Lazar.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
The biggest challenge to the district, well, and days, and continuing days of fiscal constraints and providing needs, higher, more demanding needs for our students, preparing them for the future. I think, you know, having that, having the finances available for the school district will be our biggest challenge, particularly as Herman mentioned, as the state gets a little tighter and they're available and they're sourcing of funding for the school. Kind of a middle class is getting beat up a lot. It's harder to provide the tax revenue that we've had in the past, so, you know, finances will be a continued, continued problem. My solution to that, we'll find that out. I don't know yet.
Thank you. Mr. Kriegshouser.
Well, there's definitely, that is a problem, and we've seen that just recently in the Post-Dispatch where Melville has had a cutback. Francis Howell, I was talking to a gentleman today who belongs to the Wentzville School District and they're having some financial problems out there. It's, you know, it's not difficult to figure out when your, when the income from your property is level and you have ongoing expenses and the state who supports us about a third, the money comes from the state funds, and it's tight and they're telling us they're going to give us less, we have to really work harder to maintain what we have. We have a $265 million budget currently, 29 school buildings, 3,300 employees. It's a big business. You know, if somebody were to move to St. Louis with a corporation, with 29, opening 29 new stores, having 30, hiring 3,300 people and spending 265 million, it'd be on the television in the front page right now. You know, that's how, that's the impact we have on, on the communities, which is good.
Thank you. Okay, we'll start with Mr. Kriegshouser on this question. Prop four, 68 million seems a very large sum. What is the procedure for getting bids and will they be available to the public?
Will the procedures be available to the public? I think they are, as far as I, I know. But it's a large district. We're the third largest district in the state. We have 21,300-plus students and that proportionately would be like a smaller district that only has three or four students, which we have a lot in the county. And if they put a 10 or 15 million dollar thing, it's proportionate, you know? We have, we have four major high schools, four of the largest high schools, too. And it requires, you know, it's a tight ship and we have to manage it with what we have available.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lazar.
Shout out to the first question, $68 million is certainly a lot of money, and I think that it needs to be viewed as an investment, a long-term investment that will have payoffs over the long term. And, you know, just like we all, most of us own homes, periodically we need to invest in our homes so that we can avoid future expenses. As examples, you might have to put money into repairing your roof, right? But that money spent on repairing the roof would prevent a much more expensive problem later on down the road. So from time to time, you have to spend some money to help prevent future higher costs down the road. And I think it's, needs to be viewed as an investment. I don't know the particulars on how to, on the bidding process. I believe it's available to the public, but I really don't know that process at this point.
Okay, and we'll follow up that question with, do you support Prop four? And we'll start with Mr. Lazar on this one. Do you support Proposition Four?
I do. I support the key components of it. You know, the infrastructure, which we just talked about, are very important. There's a, there's a lot in the bond about safety, which I think is critically important, particularly with the locking doors from inside to protect our students in case of an intrusion. The glass shields over the, or the glass on the entranceways that prevents bullets or whatever from coming in is very important. I'm a huge supporter of STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math. I think that's critical for our kids to be successful in a, in a world that has become more and more technical and those type of skills, our kids are going to be successful in a globally competitive marketplace are very important to have. So, yes, I'm a big supporter of Proposition Four.
Okay, and Mr. Kriegshouser.
I do, too. I sat on the Budget and Finance Committee with Tim Rooney, our finance man, when we came up with the needs for the various schools. We had, I think, some 300 requests from the various schools for this and that and so forth. And it was whittled down to what we voted on to approve and which was brought to the full board and put on the ballot. They, when you break it down with four high schools, that's about 17 million per school. And a $17 million bond issue say to a Lindbergh or a Clayton or a Ladoo School District with only one high school doesn't sound that big, yeah. But when you put 68, that's, it makes your eyes open up. But it really isn't proportionately and it's well-needed for, to keep, keep us going. Like Larry said, you know, you have to maintain the facilities and there's a lot of buildings to maintain.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Kriegshouser, this next question. How do you plan to be informed about curricular decisions facing members of the board? What would drive those decisions?
Well, I think I would first have to meet with the people that determine the curriculum within the district, superintendent and so forth, and, and review what programs, courses are offered, advanced placement courses and so forth, you know, and get a better handle on that. I really don't know at this time. I don't what exact courses are taught at which schools and so forth, you know, what foreign languages, how much science is available to the students. And is it available across all four school, high schools as they mature up into those high schools or not? I have to find that out. We certainly need to have the best.
Thank you, Mr. Lazar.
Would you mind repeating that question, Mr.?
Yes. How do you plan to be informed about circular decision, curricular? I even have my glasses on and I can't read. Sorry. How do you plan to be informed about curricular decisions facing members of the board? What would drive those decisions?
Okay. Well, I attended the meeting, I think it was last week, the Board of Education meeting last week, where teachers and educators kind of present their proposals for the curriculum and changes to the curriculum. They show what was before and they show the proposed changes to it. So that's how you become educated or at least introduced to them. That, that is simply an introduction. You do need to do your own research and talk to other educators and do your own, own research on their proposals, but that's the process for understanding those. It seems to be a pretty good one, in my opinion.
Okay, thank you. And this kind of follows up. How will you keep up to date on innovations in educating kids? Mr. Lazar.
Well, I've been, I'm not an educator. I'm in, I'm in business. I've only, the last couple of years I became much more involved in education. And one thing I've learned is to rely on experts. I'm in, I work for Energizer and I have my job. I don't know if I want teachers coming in doing my job. And so I don't think I should be telling teachers how to do their job. I think we should rely on their education and their expertise and their professionalism and their passion for educating our students. I do keep informed, I'm a big fan of reading Diane Ravitch and her work. I've read a number of her books. I follow her blog. So, and she, I think, is hitting it right on as far as education and curriculum. I follow, I support her.
Thank you. Mr. Kriegshouser, did you want me to repeat the question?
Well, no. It's, it's a learning experience for any new board member to find out everything they need to know on curriculum at this level, high schools, as well as the elementary, because there's new theories on how children should be taught basic math, basic reading and writing and so forth. And so I would have to educate myself further in that and learn all I could in order to make decent decisions with the board. Other board members that are already on there could probably help me and advise me and give me some advice what to look for and so forth to make those determinations. I don't see any real radical needs to change things, but there's always need to improve it in any organization, you know?
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kriegshouser, besides finances, are you interested in, what other areas are you interested in providing input and direction to?
What other areas am I?
Yeah, okay. Your interest in finances has been communicated. What other areas within Rockwood are you most interested in providing input and direction to?
I think Rockwood and the other school districts around the state, and there's 520 of us, need better assistance from the state in financing with legislation that will allow us to be more self-providing as well as what aid do they have available? Because I see aid running, the state spends money on everything else and they cut back on education. And I feel education's the most important thing. We spend more money on social services and that goes a lot to people who haven't been properly educated in the first place, you know? We're fortunate here in Rockwood to have good schools. It's not true of every public school in the state, as you all know. Normandy, Riverview, the city, Kansas City are unaccredited and their students aren't getting the quality education ours do.
Thank you. Mr. Lazar?
Yeah, a couple of things I'm interested besides the finances is I think we need to have a good environment, a really strong environment for learning for our kids, for our students. That means a lot of things. That means good quality, passionate teachers. That means the resources availability. That means a good student-to-teacher ratio so that they can be, provide their, spread the resources out as effectively as they can. I'm a big supporter of curriculum and continuing to advance the curriculum and particularly in teaching our kids critical thinking skills. I don't, I'm not a fan of all this testing that we're doing. I think we, yes, I understand there's a need for testing, but I think we've way overdone it and I think we need to bring that back and teach kids. I know where I work, I don't do tests. They want me to think. They want me to think on my feet and understand the world, the complexities of the world. And that doesn't always fit into a multiple choice text pack. So, very passionate about critical thinking and curriculum, a broad range, not just, not just STEM and reading and writing and math, but history and art and languages and all those other things that are important for understanding the world.
Thank you. As Rockwood faces continued challenges with revenue and expenditures, what aspect of Rockwood's educational system should be most protected and which aspects would you consider options for possible cuts? Mr. Lazar, I believe you're on first.
Well, like I said, my last point, I think protecting that environment that promotes education for our students, which is the student-teacher ratio and the curriculum and those kind of things. Teachers are on the front line for our kids and I think as much support as we can provide them is absolutely critical. I hope we don't need to get the cuts. I hope, and I don't think we will. I don't see anything that says we will. But, you know, it's one thing, you know, in my job that I've done for many, many years, you always have to look at the budget. You always have to find what is providing the least return on investment. And that's not an easy answer because everything is important, right? Everything's important to something. So it's, it's getting a lot of opinion, opinion from a lot of different people and just, you know, making your best decision with the information you have.
Thank you. Mr. Kriegshouser.
Well, personnel in any organization is the most important, any business. They're driven by their personnel at all levels, top management, production plants, sales. You have to have quality people and they have to feel part of the company and they have to feel properly compensated if you're going to be successful. Otherwise, you're going to be out of business. And we see that in the real world all the time with stores, stores that provide value in the products and services they're selling. They stay in business, they grow, others don't and the customer leaves. So we need to protect the staff, these 3,300 people in all levels, we need to protect them. You don't want to see the facilities go down and you have to spend money on them periodically, not necessarily every year, but you can't let them get too bad or else that starts affecting the whole thing. And it's like a store. If you let your store go and, you know, if it wasn't modernized and kept up the market conditions, you soon start losing customers. So you have to just balance that all out with what available resources you have. And I have a lot of experience over my lifetime in working with different not-for-profit groups as well as business groups in doing that.
Thank you. Mr. Kriegshouser, how can Rockwood attract and retain great staff, teachers and administrators, but also all the other professionals and support employees?
Well, again, your minoration is one of the things, important things. I have to talk to the superintendent and other principals, I guess, and, and find out what their problem is. If they have a teacher who feels they're not properly compensated, we'd have to analyze. And I don't know if that's the board's responsibility, but it certainly is the responsibility of the superintendent to keep that person happy and, you know, it's like an athletic team in a way, if you, with all these trades and so forth, you know, you have so much money you can spend and you have to spend it and keep your players happy and so forth and, or else you're not going to be a winner. We want to be a winner.
Okay. Mr. Lazar?
Certainly, certainly compensation is one piece, but it's more than that. You know, the Cardinals, as an example, are a great baseball team. They're not at the top salary level, they're, you know, towards the top end. But it's, it's more than that. It's creating, it's creating an environment that's set up for success, where you can achieve, where you can aspire to do good things. It's creating an environment that is welcoming to different people. And like Herman talked about, it's about winning, it's about success, it's about putting, being put into a position where you feel you can make a difference. If you don't feel you can make a difference, who wants to work for a company where how much is paid or something like that? So it's, it's all those things that go into that, you know, it's, it's providing the resources, there's trying, you know, things like they do around here about the, like create more leaders and things like that. You know, it's all those, those things that make you want to come to school every day and, and teach your kids.
Thank you. Mr. Lazar, how will you balance representing union-backed teachers and concerned tax-paying parents?
Well, you have to listen to everybody, right? There's a lot of stakeholders involved. There's educators, there's parents, there's students, there's, there's the union members and there's taxpayers. And, you know, it's, it's finding that balance, right? It's a three-legged stool, take one of those stools, legs away and the whole thing tips over. So, you know, there's always this constant kind of tension of pulling this way and pulling that way. And with enough work and communicating and talking to people, being open, being transparent, you can, you can find the best spot. And not everyone's going to be happy there, right? Because you can't make everyone happy because then, you know, just, there's too many, too many different views to make everybody happy, but just finding the sweet spot and that's a success work.
Thank you. Mr. Kriegshouser.
Well, I had some experience in that from management side, negotiating with Teamsters Union for about 25 years. We never had any problems on pay or benefits. We'd always have problems maybe with some people didn't, didn't want to work overtime or didn't want to do this or that or something else that would interfere with our ability to manage. And that's where we sometimes locked horns a little bit. But as far as pay, you know, whatever they felt that they were deserving, and they always came up with decent pay requests, we, we met them and benefits and so forth. I mean, we wanted our employees to be happy. We didn't want to have them disgruntled. That's bad on your business, so we need to keep, keep it that way. We don't want to have teachers running, leaving the district and going somewhere else and badmouthing us. That's the worst thing in the world.
Okay, thank you. This is from, let's start with Mr. Kriegshouser. As a member of the Rockwood Board of Education, would you support the Missouri General Assembly using public funds to support private schools such as the school vouchers that would allow parents to choose any school for their children and have state funding follow that child?
That is a political question that is difficult to answer because there's a lot of pressures in the city in particular, in Kansas City, because they have failing school districts to do something on that. And I'd leave that up to the wisdom of the elected officials. I mean, I don't know to say, if I say yes, on one hand, you may solve one problem. If you say no, you don't solve the growing problem of the inner-city schools.
Well, I think they're asking, as, as a member of the school board, would you think your school board would support diverting public funds to private schools?
Well, I don't worry about the private schools. The private schools are in existence and they'll, they will stay where they are or they'll fail based on their own support. And we need to find the support for our own, for the public school.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Lazar.
Yeah, I agree with Herman then. The board would have no control over that. And that's something, what they do in Jeff City is what they do in Jeff City and we have to follow the rules. That's, that's the law, whether we like it or not. With that said, I don't like it. I just, this week I was in Arizona, all week in Phoenix, Arizona, and the headlines there in the newspapers every day were about, you know, cuts in the public schools. The public, they have cut, you know, cutting all their sports, cutting all their extracurricular stuff, cutting a lot of their advanced placement stuff with kids, you know, cuts, 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 cuts. And, and the public schools are not performing very well and there's a big, huge uproar from what I, what I read. And people were talking to me that I was working with about the problems we're having in Phoenix. And that's what happens. When you do that type of thing, you take, because that money goes away from public schools to private schools and then it hurts, the public schools are diminished. And to me, that's, that's bad. I think public schools are a foundation for creating citizens, you know, strong citizens in our community, they're a foundation for our communities. We all gather around our schools and our sporting events and I don't like that to happen, but, you know, no control. but, you know, no control.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Lusar, what are your thoughts about Rockwood's participation in this VICC program? Or is that?
Voluntary.
Okay. And how can we meet the needs of students who come from the city while also taking care of resident Rockwood kids?
Okay. So, that's the voluntary transfer program from the, from the city. And a couple of things I've learned about that, I was not up to speed on until past several weeks after a tenant presentation here last week on that. And one thing I learned is that Rockwood gains financially from that program. They get revenue for that program with really out any additional cost because like filling seats on a empty airplane, right? You have this empty seat, you might as well fill it. And so, from a financial perspective, it makes all the sense in the world. But more importantly, I think from, if you take away the money, I think the more we can diversify our schools, the better all of us are. I know where I work, we have a diverse environment at work. Our company wants diversity. We have to go out and work with people that are different than us and learn from them. And I think that's what that does. It allows us to do that and break down some prejudices and makes us all better. So, yeah.
Mr. Kriegshouser?
Well, racial diversity is a question on everybody's mind today, you know. We see the Ferguson situation, I was watching it on television just an hour ago. And yet, I have many black friends, minority friends, who are well-educated college graduates, professional people. And for people to think anything other, you know, that people because of the color of their skin are not as capable of being anything as, you know, educated as well as anybody because I have those friends, it's just a shame. But unfortunately, through a lot of other reasons, the social situations, a lot of black children unfortunately grow up. And I've seen it as my, serving on the Salvation Army board where we've had to help some of these people in very bad situations because of uneducated decisions they've made in their lives.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Kriegshouser, what are your thoughts on Common Core?
On Common Core? Common Core is, is the education, I'd have to talk to the, to the professors, superintendent more on the depth of it because, I mean, it's just such a broad statement, Common Core. What is Common Core? You may kind of break it down. What courses do the kids taught in kindergarten, first grade, second grade, third grade that are going to make them critical thinkers and move ahead? Is there better ways of teaching them today, the basics, than they taught me or taught any of you in the audience when you were in school? I don't know. If they, somebody's come up with better ways, we should certainly use them. But if, if not, I don't see any reason to centralize it all under the state or the federal government. That just takes away our own opportunity to do what rise.
Thank you. Mr. Lusar?
Well, I have kind of three general thoughts. First, I think there's a great deal of misinformation for whatever reason. I won't get into the reasons for that, but I think there's, the vast majority of what's out there is probably inaccurate. So, I try to find out what the, what it really is versus what you might see in the media and elsewhere. That's the first thing. The second thing is, we spent, we had two years that we went to Arkansas. My job, I was transferred from here, went down to Bentonville, Arkansas for two years and came back. My kids went down there, they were at a different place in their learning program than when they were here. So, that hurt them when they transferred, came to Arkansas. When we came back, two years later, again, they were somewhere else because these, because Arkansas had different standards than Missouri is. A lot of kids are moving from different, from state to state and we don't have common standards across states. You hurt those kids. So, whether Common Core is the answer to that, I don't know if that is the answer. But having standards that are consistent from state to state benefit our children and make them more, for the next level, make them more prepared for the next level, whatever that is.
Thank you. Mr. Lusar, the district invests a significant amount of money for physical school safety. How do you feel about investing a fraction of this amount in having one district employee responsible for ensuring that students remain safe through substantive abuse prevention education and early interventions? This person would coordinate age-appropriate curriculum, staff training and various student supports.
Sounds great. Take that on the first line. Sounds great. I guess I would need to know more information about that, although there wasn't a lot of information.
It's a bit of proposal, right?
Yeah, I think, yeah, you know, I do think, I do think it's really important that so many kids are lacking with healthcare, they're lacking in psychiatric care, they come from difficult environments. So, and if we are able to help them early on in their life and you can prevent worse things from happening down the road, that's a good thing. It's a very good thing. How to do that, I don't know if that's the right answer for that, but I do think that is very important.
Thank you. Mr. Kriegshouser?
Well, each one of us with our own families, we have to work within our family core to educate our children, not only in school, but at home and to teach them values that become part of their personality and what they are when they grow up. And you see some twenty-one-year-old people that are greatly educated, highly educated, doing wonderful things and then you see some other people out robbing cars and shooting, killing people on the street. And it's all because they haven't been taught values and education. I don't believe, when they were both babies, that they were, the one was destined to be a criminal and the other was destined to be a PhD. I think what's happened in between, through their education and their environment, they've grown up and gotten, and that's the problem we have and we need to get more educated people and less people in trouble. I mean, there's some statements going around by people that if you don't educate, they either get, go to jail or they're, or they're killed. And I mean, that's a very sad thing, but that's what I've heard.
Thank you. Mr. Kriegshouser, do you think we should change the start time of middle school?
What is the start time of middle school?
Early.
How early?
Seven thirty.
Oh, seven thirty. Well, I don't know. Is it not liked by people? I, that's a hard, I'd have to check with more people than just making a remark off the cuff. Do parents like early? I don't know. When did the high schools start? They start about eight, eight-something at Marquette? And then the elementary, do they start early too?
Later.
They're later?
Middle schools are earliest.
Is there a reason for that, being earlier?
Somebody has to be early for free tier bussing.
Free tier bussing.
Oh, I see. Okay, okay. Well, I'd have to probably be honest with you. I'd have to look into it more to see, see what the answer should be. And if, and if it's a matter of balancing the bussing and you're getting better utilization out of that equipment and investment and the driver's salaries, I guess there has to be some kind of compromise. I don't know.
Somebody has to start early, right?
Yes, yes. It doesn't really interrupt somebody's life too much. I can see with a lot of women working, they want the children picked up early so they can get to work and then, but maybe some don't. I don't, I'd have to look into that.
Thank you.
Twenty-one thousand students there.
Mr. Lusar?
I did, I think what may, what might be driving that question is during middle school, kids are going through puberty and going through a lot of physical changes. And that time is particularly important for sleep. But, but like Herman said and Dr. Knos said, somebody's got to go early. So, who's going to go early if the middle school kids don't? You know, the little kids or the high schoolers? You know, that's a good, good debate to have. It's a good discussion to have. I don't know the answer. I do understand that, you know, the middle school kids, my kids went through it and they were grumpy, we had to wake them up at, you know, six-thirty or whatever, whatever to get them off. So, but somebody's going to be grumpy, whether it's, you know, the seven-year-old or the thirteen-year-old or the seventeen-year-old, so.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Lusar, do you support a tax increase?
Would I support a tax increase?
Tax increase.
Yeah, I don't like making more taxes, I can tell you that. My, my budget is tight and, but, you know, if, if the state were to cut funding, I think our need for supporting our schools and supporting our kids and preparing them for the future would override that. And I would not like it and I hope it doesn't come to that. But if it came to it, you know, tough decision, I think, and it won't be up to me, you know, that'd be up to the voters, right? They'll come to the board to decide whether to put it on the ballot or not. And I suppose I would support putting it on the ballot and let the voters decide.
Thank you. Mr. Kriegshouser?
Well, several years ago, we did a program Picture Rockwood for the Future and it brought up potential types of tax increases in order to do certain things, facility change and so forth. We had about three or four sessions out at the Annex Building, I sat in those meetings. And it would take, if we don't have aid from the state and we don't float the bond issues, it's going to take a sizable tax increase to balance and keep just where we are now. So, that would be a major decision to make. I know we haven't had a tax increase, I think, since nineteen ninety-four, but our property values went up in the meantime, so we got more income from it. But with property value, residential values leveling and, and not as much additional big store development, commercial, you know, our income is down. And it's in, it's in the annual report there, shows a graph where our income has gone down from the property tax, so we have to make it up somewhere.
Thank you. And this question is directed to Mr. Kriegshouser, but you are welcome to answer too. Do you feel that membership in the organization Citizens for Educational Freedom would make it a conflict, be, provide a conflict of interest with the interests of the Rockwood School Board?
No, no, I don't at all because that was a group that I became affiliated with a number of years ago. They've been in existence from nineteen fifty-nine. They did have a mission at one time for vouchers, but vouchers do not go, they're not successful. And the private schools run their own show, as I mentioned before. They have fund drives and everything else under the sun. They get tax deductions from donors now and they, the good ones stay and the others will go. And they have alumni, they have parents, they have all sorts of different situations, whether it's a Westminster, Lutheran Catholic, Country Day, John Burrows. I mean, these are institutions. How long they'll stay in business, they'll stay in business as long as their parents feel that they want to support them, if they feel, but we have a lot of people in, I'm Catholic, in our parish that attend Marquette and Parkway West because part of our parish is in their district and they seem to be satisfied, so that's good. We want all kids to be educated. It's not, it's not good for a society to have the things that happened in Ferguson existing and they're only going to get worse if we don't keep educating the kids.
Okay. Thank you. And did you want to respond? Okay. I have one last question here. Discuss the direction of the school district. Do you think we are heading in the right direction? And Mr. Lusar will start with that, please.
Well, no, Dr. Knos is pretty new in the job, five months now, something like that? I don't know. And, and, yeah, I think there's some great things going on. I think there's some great things going on with the curriculum. I think the bond issue that helps improve, improve the infrastructure is good for our students. I really like what we're doing with STEM, the science and technology piece, because I think it helps prepare our kids for the future better. Is it perfect? You know, probably not, but that's, you know, that's what we continue to strive towards. But as far as the direction we are going, yeah, I feel very good about that direction. You bet.
Thank you. Mr. Kriegshouser?
Well, I think I'd just have to say the same thing. I mean, we're, we're going in a good direction. I see the major problem is, is in financing down the road, five, ten, fifteen years from now. And that probably is going to have to be a change at the legislative session. Because originally, when public schools started eighteen seventy-five, property tax was the only tax you had. You didn't have income and sales taxes. And the school districts have always had to operate to raise their funds off of the property tax. And yet, as it went along, it was negative to do it. You know, people don't want to raise their property taxes. It's the last tax people want to raise because they get that bill in one time and they voted, no. And the sales tax and the income tax come from, goes to the state first and that's where the real money is that comes in.
Okay. I don't have any more questions from the audience, but I have one question, which I hope the audience is interested in for each of you gentlemen. What qualities do you think you will bring that will enhance the Rockwood School Board? Mr. Kriegshouser, I think you're first.
What qualities? Well, as, as I say on my resume, my bio, I've served on a lot of boards. I've been invited to serve them. I haven't, this is the first time I've ever run, run for anything, so. People asked me to serve on a hospital board. I became the chairman, we built addition to it. I've served on Salvation Army Board for a number of years. I chaired the Emergencies Disaster Committee. We send canteens out to help people when there's tornadoes and fires and other floods and so forth. I've served on that committee from ninety-three to twenty thirteen, twenty years. I just turned it over to another gentleman two years ago. I was involved with the high school hockey when it started. All of our schools participate in it. And it's forty-four years later, we're still going. We play our finals down at the Scottrade now. And I was on the Better Business Bureau one time, I'm on, what else did I say there? A member of Kiwanis. And just, I'd love, I'd love to participate in the community in public service. That's, I've done that all my life.
Thank you. Mr. Lusar?
Yeah, my, my midlife crisis manifested itself in a strange way. Just, just a passion for understanding and a passion for, for learning and trying to grasp, get my head around the world, you know, learn how things work. And that kind of, that passion for knowledge and passion for learning and, and interest in understanding just kind of drew me, you know. We're better placed to do that than a school district where you surround yourself with smart, educated people that can challenge the way you think. I've been in a bubble before, I've been in this little echo chamber bubble before. And the best thing that I've ever done is kind of escaped all that bubble and expanded my horizons and my views on things and sought the views of a lot of diverse, different people. And I think that made me better, it made me stronger and I want to keep doing it. And that's just a passion for, for knowledge and passion for learning is what I think I bring.
Thank you. Okay. Well, since there are no more questions, we'll start with the closing statements and Mr. Lusar will get to close first.
I think, you know, we talked, I talked earlier about the purpose of schools and schools to prepare our kids for the next level. That level is more school, more education, the workforce, military or whatever. But it's more than that. It's preparing citizens to be good citizens for the world and good citizens for the community. And, you know, I think our public schools are critical elements in, in doing that and they've done that. You know, my kids are great examples of that and I'd like to see them do that with more kids and for, not just now, but for decades ahead to the future. I want to stop thinking about today and start thinking about a future. We have an obligation, we have a responsibility to prepare our kids and build a system, an infrastructure to prepare kids, to prepare our kids' kids, right? So that our kids' kids can also have the same resource and the same access, the same quality education that my kids have. And I think that's ultimately what we're trying to do is try to build a long-term way to make our kids better citizens in the world and that way we all prosper, right? We have educated kids and then their kids are educated and we'll all benefit from that. So, that's why I'm here and I think that's what I'm looking forward to contributing if I'm elected, so.
Thank you. Mr. Kriegshouser?
Well, I have to pretty well say the same thing. Every child needs to be educated and we need to see that that's done. I mean, it's that simple. And, and there's a lot of things that need to be done to, to keep it going like that. Unfortunately, we see the negative results when people aren't educated in the society and it reflects on all of us and it hurts all of us. And so, we just need to keep, keep our district and the other districts good, you know.
Well, thank you. And I want to thank both of you for joining us this evening and sharing the information about your candidacy. I want to thank the audience so much for being here to listen to them. Remember to vote on Tuesday, April seventh, for the candidate, for one of these two candidates, only one. If you would like more information on this election or other elections, don't hesitate to call the league office at three one four nine six one six eight six nine. And we also would like to invite you to join the League of Women Voters or make a donation to support our community service forums. Good night and drive safely.